Call to order, the special meeting committee of the whole of the president, board of trustees, roll call.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Peck is not here, trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
We also have the pleasure of Cub Scout PAC 13, Den 17 will lead us in the pledge. Do we all stand?
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Very nice.
PAC 13, Den 17.
Good job, boys.
That's true.
I have just a couple announcements. Yesterday, we lost a lifelong resident of the village of Plainfield.
We did, okay.
That in being Sam Reichert. He was a high school, Plainfield High School graduate. He's been our Plainfield Township Road Commissioner since 2003. He was elected to that position in 2005. And my deepest sympathy goes out to his wife Lynn, his daughter Sunny, and his son Tim. And that's all I have. Excuse me, one more thing. On a lighter note, Commander Novak just completed the, and graduated from the FBI Academy. And I want to congratulate Commander Novak.
Thank you.
And Mayor Collins. And Commander Novak ran the Chicago Marathon and completed it yesterday.
Very nice.
I guess we're gonna have to ask the time. It's in the sun times, so. Oh, very good, very good.
You may want to ask him if the FBI training was a lighter matter or not. Maybe he could break 4:30 next year.
I'd still be running.
At this point, we'll seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Do you have any trustee comments?
Actually, I'll get that later during where it says trustee comments, sir. Thank you. I'm just following the order that Michelle gave me.
Yep.
Second.
Thank you. That was Mr. Fay and Mr. Rippey. Thank you. Mr. Rippey?
Yes.
Mrs. Benucci?
Yes.
Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
And Mr. Rassich?
Yes.
Motion is approved. The first item for approval tonight is the Hidden River final lift. We are seeking board consideration of a motion to contribute $129,567.50 plus a 10% contingency per the attached agreement between the village of Plainfield and land partners for the completion of the final lift at Hidden River subdivision located on Frazier Road.
Second.
Couple of quick questions, if I may, a few. Land partners, who are they?
That is actually Mel Eisenstein, Mel Eisenstein's partnership. And just for the record, there is another partnership, it's called KRL. So in the final agreement, if it's okay with the board, we will make that one slight modification. He has, as you know, Mel Eisenstein is the I in MPI. So he has a fair amount of land throughout the village of Plainfield, and he purchased approximately 50 lots down Hidden River several years ago.
Okay. The money is coming from where, general funds?
We will be paying this out of, well, capital account.
Capital account, okay.
Public, excuse me, trustee, public comments will be in a little bit. This is the business, and then we're gonna have public comments.
Get an agenda item?
In the workshop.
Yeah, in the workshop.
This is business, workshop follows this.
Right, I wish to speak on this agenda item.
We, it's common practice, we don't speak on agenda items that are on for the evening.
Okay. So, okay, so you're denying public comment on this?
It's common practice that we do not allow discussion on items on the agenda.
Michael, have there been other developments that we have done this for?
Yes, as you know, there have been basically other developers where we've contributed. As you know, there's been some developments we've had, whether it's been a deficiency of funds, we have been required to contribute a portion of the funds where there have been developments where there, again, there is no proceeds, no surety bonds. So in this case, the surety bond company, we've been going back and forth, and we've concluded that at this point, it's really, let's try to continue to make demands on the surety bond company, and therefore, because the developer went out of business, unfortunately, the village and the purchaser who bought improved lots are really ultimately responsible for completing this development, the final lift.
Thank you.
Surety bonds not valuable anymore, or is this just a special case?
Again, this is a special case. And since I've been here, it's been very challenging working with the surety bond company. We've been trying, for almost two years, trying to...
I gathered that from the write-up, but it's just, we'll make sure that most of our bonds are collectible. This one just doesn't happen to be because of people went bankrupt, is that the idea?
Well, yes, and again, remember, this is the last subdivision where the final lift has not been completed. So we've been pretty successful in getting all the developments, basically pulling bonds and getting the final lift done over the past three, four, or five years. This is really, you know, with the exception of Spring Bank, which is being done, I believe, in the next few weeks, which is still an ongoing project, and they have good surety bonds. This is the last project that has not been completed, so we've been...
It's the last one we're likely to get stuck with, then.
Yeah, this is the only development that, where the roadways have not been completed as it relates to the final lift.
Well, there is one more, and that's Playa Vista, however, the original owners still own it, and still, we still have everything in place for them.
Anders bond.
This is the last one where we had it, where it was lost to the bank, and there were the various issues that played out. So we've, actually, Michael and Alan have had a great track record of getting these taken care of. There have only been a few where we've, we found ourselves in this position, and frankly, it's a responsible way to close that gap.
It's gonna be done by the first of December, too.
The expectation is it'll be, yeah, the only way that we will participate is that they get it done this year.
We better pass it tonight, then.
Go ahead.
You know, Mr. Gary, I have a question. In your discussion, it said the original developer, Krugoff Homes, went out of business and failed to complete the lift. He went out, he ceased building in the Plainfield area in Illinois. He moved to Colorado.
That's correct.
Are they still in business in Colorado, to your knowledge?
I don't know.
And do we have any right to pursue Krugoff in Colorado to, in order to receive reimbursement?
I don't think we have a right to basically pursue his company in Colorado. This is Krugoff holding in Illinois, so, I mean, I think we've exhausted this. If obviously there's any potential of going after Krugoff, we would have done that several years ago.
Okay. So we have no legality in order to pursue?
Based on my discussions with village attorney, no.
Okay, you have discussed it?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, the village attorney's been involved in this over the past several years.
Okay, fine.
Trying to find a resolution where the village would not be responsible for it.
So the only way this would ever be done is by the, either the homeowners association paying for it, or the village of Plainfield coming to the rescue of a poorly designed group?
I think staff has concluded the only way this road will be getting done, and again, times are the essence, because the road is, you know, deferred to Mr. Persons, but the only way this road will get done is if the village partners with, partnerships to complete it.
And again, just to be clear, we're not paying 100% of the cost. We are only paying half, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
The only reason I bring this up, and obviously, you know, the comments were made, because there's always the possibility someone will say, boy, if the village had only known, you know, well, you know, hindsight's really great sight, and unfortunately, this progressed, and I think the village has pursued it. And I know you're very diligent, and Alan is, and Mr. Murphy is also in regard to this. Okay, last question, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll take the role. Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Audit report, we are seeking board consideration to accept the village of Plainfield audit management letter for the 2013-14 fiscal year.
So move.
Second.
All right, and I know that we have a presentation.
Sure, I'll introduce Jim Savio, who is the partner for Sikich LP, who is our primary communications and lead to our audit for this last fiscal year. I'll let Jim go through the audit, and then if there's any questions, we can answer them at the end.
Thanks, Tracy. And thank you for inviting me here tonight to present the village's first-ever comprehensive annual financial report. As part of having a comprehensive annual financial report, the first thing you probably notice is you get a really cool cover this year. I like to take credit for it, but Tracy actually designed the cover, and it looks really nice. It also includes an introductory section now, which includes a letter transmittal that was prepared by Brian. It also includes a greater or more enhanced statistical section, greatly expanded. And this report will be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. So next year, we'll also have a certificate in that introductory section as well. And the program really provides, you know, really promotes full disclosure and greater clarity and transparency. And I also want to point out, going forward, as far as the audit process itself, we had preliminary field work back in May, on May 12th and May 13th. We had final field work, which was where we do the bulk of our substantive testing. That was done August 4th to August 15th. We had preliminary drafts issued on August 29th, and then the final reports were issued on October 8th. We met all of the deadlines in our audit schedule, and the audit itself went very smoothly. I also want to thank at this time Brian, Tracy, Colleen, the entire staff for all their help and assistance during the entire audit process. Like I said, it went very smoothly, and they provided us with all of the documentation that we had requested. I'd like to turn and start in the financial section on page one. Page one and two is the independent auditor's report, and it's, the only two pages that we as auditors are responsible for, the rest of the CAFER, the comprehensive annual financial report, is the responsibility of management. And management responsibility, as well as the auditor's responsibility, is listed out on page one, and then the very top of page two. Turning to page two, the opinion paragraph is up at the top, and we have an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the village. Turning about, two pages over, I just want to point out management's discussion analysis, that's on MDNA page one. This is prepared by Tracy and provides a really good overview of the village's financial position, as well as the changes in that financial position. It also explains any significant changes that occurred during the year. And finally, it does provide some very good comparative data that you can't find in the rest of the comprehensive annual financial report. So I always sound like a broken record, but if there's only one thing you want to read in this 120-page-plus document, I would read the MDNA, because like I said, it provides a really good overview of the village's finances. Turning to page three.
Unless you're truly a numbers geek, and then you'll enjoy the rest of the document.
Exactly, exactly. Alan and I talked about that earlier.
It is fascinating, isn't it?
He's not a numbers geek, so. Turning to page three, actual page three, not MDNA page three. Pages three through six are what we call the government-wide financial statements, and they present the consolidated financial statements of the village. So it has all the funds combined, except for the police pension fund, which is the fiduciary fund, so that's not included in these statements. It's presented on what we call, or what we accountants call, the economic resources measurement focus and the full accrual basis of accounting. And what that means, it has a long-term focus, so it includes all your capital assets, all of the long-term debt of the village, and it's similar to what you would find in a private sector financial statements. Turning to page four, down at the bottom, your net position, or what you would call retained earnings in the private sector, just want to point out your unrestricted net position for governmental activities, which is all of your governmental funds, is about $12.4 million, and that's up about $4 million from the prior year. And the business-type activities, which is your water and sewer fund, unrestricted net position of about $12.7 million, up a little bit, about $400,000 from the prior year. Turning to page five is the statement of activities, or your net, or your income statement. And on page six, I just want to point out down at the bottom, change in net position, governmental activities, a loss of about $8.8 million. That is due to about $15.7 million of depreciation expense, and a lot of that is from the infrastructure that was accepted by the village back in the 2000s when the housing boom was occurring. So without that depreciation, you're looking at a gain of more like seven or eight million. And then business-type activities, like I said, your water and sewer fund, little bit of a loss, about $167,000. Before a transfer, though, the net income was about $324,000. Turning to page seven, on page seven through 11 are your governmental fund financial statements. And we show these by major fund, and then all the non-major funds are rolled into one column, and that's the second column from the right on page seven and page eight. And this is presented on the current financial resources measurement focus and the modified accrual basis of accounting, which means it's short-term in nature, doesn't include capital assets or long-term debt, more of a budgetary-focused financial statements. And what I'd like to point out on page eight, first column, your general fund, the unassigned fund balance is about $9.8 million. That's about 49% of the fiscal year 2014 general fund expenditures, which is in accordance with the village's fund balance policy. And also, I want to point out, the next column over, your capital projects fund, you no longer have a deficit in that capital projects fund. It is now a positive $405,138, assigned for future capital projects. So a great, great accomplishment by the village, I think that was over $12 million deficit at one point, so, great job. Turning to page 14, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position for your proprietary fund, or your water and sewer fund. Halfway down the page, your operating income, little bit of a loss this year, about $571,000, so not quite covering all of your depreciation expense of $3 million, but close to it. The prior year had about a $2 million operating income, partly due to the drought of 2012, there's a lot more water sold that year, and revenues were above $14 million versus about the $13.3 million this year, so. And then down towards the bottom, like I had mentioned before, income before transfers of about $324,000. And page 15 shows you your cash flows, so cash in and out for your water and sewer fund, and you can see up at the top, your net cash from operating activities, actually had positive cash increase of about $2.4 million. And then down at the bottom, total increase in cash of about $3.9 million, a lot of that due to the repayment of the advance from the capital projects fund. And page 18 shows the income statement for your police pension fund. You can see net investment income about halfway down the page of about $1.7 million, and a net increase in total of about $2.6 million, so another good year for the police pension fund. And turning to page 26, where we're in the notes to the financial statements, just want to point out footnote 2A, down at the bottom, the last paragraph, custodial credit risk is the, if, in the event that a bank fails, that the village cannot retrieve or regain their deposits. I just want to point out that all of the deposits were either insured by FDIC or were collateralized by the bank where the deposits were held, so no exposure to custodial credit risk. And on page 32, for those that are interested, footnote six shows a lot more detail of your long-term debt activity, including future required debt service schedules. And I want to point out on page 37, which we're still in the debt footnote, footnote 6F gives a little more detail on the advance refunding you had this year, where you refunded the 2004A and 2004B bonds that resulted in a cash flow savings of about $754,000 and a economic gain of about $720,000. And lastly, on page 49, pensions, I know, are a hot topic. The schedule of funding progress is shown on page 49, up at the top, the first table for your Illinois municipal retirement. You'll see, fourth column over, the funded ratio, which is the actuarial value of the assets that have been set aside to pay those benefits, divided by the actuarial accrued liability, is about 79%, increase of about 4% from the prior year. IMRF smooths out their gains and losses on investments over a five-year period, so if you took the actual market value of the investments that you had at IMRF at December 31st, 2013, the funded ratio would actually be 90%. And retirees are not included in these figures, they are funded at 100%. So the actual funded ratio would be above that 90% if you included retirees. And page 50 shows the same information for the police pension fund, and you'll see a funded ratio of about 78.5%. That's held steady for about the past three years, but it's still above the benchmark of similar municipalities, which is normally in the low 60s, we've seen recently, so. The funded ratio is above of the benchmark for municipality your size. And I'll point out, too, we also issued, in addition to the comprehensive annual financial report, the auditor's communication to the board of trustees. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this document as well. At this point, I'd be happy to answer questions for either document.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. If you're gonna read one page, I would read page MDNA 12. The summary there, that Tracy put together, is an outstanding summary of what we've done, what we're trying to do, how we're running, conservative budgets and stuff like that. So if you're gonna read one page, read, read that one in particular. The other comment I have, you've covered a lot of the other things, which I noted, the pensions and all, I think we're doing very well on. Obviously, you've covered the fact we, $4 million ahead of where we were last year, so it paid off the capital fund and so on, or got out of the hole in that. So you covered all the highlights, but the village is in very, very good shape, but this document is new, and I didn't read it all, believe me, but at the back page, last couple of pages are kind of interesting in terms of employees, well, actually, page I started on the board in 2005, and now 2014. It's interesting to see the employers in town, the number of employees that they have, and some people who were there in 2005 are not there anymore, not even on the list. And some others have come. Another significant change is Walmart was 555 and went down to 283 employees, but some other people have now appeared, so it's, you got a lot of information here that we've never really seen before, so it's an excellent summary of Plainfield, the village's condition, and everything else, so it's a good reference document, if you don't read it all. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
You know, I have one comment. I have only one comment, it's not a question, it's a comment. Whenever I look at anything that Sikich performed for the village of Plainfield, I always feel very confident in the sense that it puts our rating, our understanding, our credibility, really at the highest level. I always compliment Ms. Plekum and her entire staff and Mr. Murphy, and I always, I don't like to bring up a particular area, but why don't we talk about Dixon, Illinois, and draining Dixon? With the assurances that I feel very positive about with this particular report, all the safeguards, your diligence, Mr. Savio, and the diligence from the village of Plainfield, I think the public, the village of Plainfield, the people who live in this community really have a sense of safety. They may not know it, but it really is. There is no such thing as draining Plainfield. All dollars are watched, and I think your diligence and ours really is paying off, and it's a wonderful, good feeling, because it really has disturbed me in the past, what has occurred in other communities. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll make a comment here. When we were elected, some of us were elected to the board in 2009, we inherited a time, an economic time, that was just terrible everywhere. And the worst thing is having to lay off employees and it's cutbacks that we as a village had to make. But we also had an excellent village administrator that we hired, and through him and through the people and the staff and everyone, Tracy Plekum and the others that are all part of this, turned a lot of this around. And to see that balance go from a deficit of $12 million to such a positive note at this point, I mean, that in itself speaks volumes, along with balancing the amount of services that still go on in the village. It's one thing to cut everything, but we're still providing the good services that go along with it, so that's to your credit, so thank you very much for all your hard work, all of you.
Thank you for the kind words, actually. The credit goes, thank you for the credit to Tracy and I and to Sikich, but really, it does go to the department directors and the entire staff, and also to you. Humbly, we could not have accomplished what we accomplished in the last five years without a lot of heavy lifting by everybody. And, you know, when we, if you recall, when we made our first call with the rating agencies, just to maintain what was then our double A rating, we set out a 12-year plan to pay off that negative position. We did it in five years, took a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to get there, and humbly, the community's been rewarded with a double A-plus rating, which is the second highest rating you can ask for, and that's a testament to all of you and to the staff and to everybody, so thank you to everyone. There are no other comments?
But there is, and...
And having a comprehensive annual financial report, I think reflects really well on the village, as well as it's gonna look, looked upon favorably by the bond rating agencies as well, so it's something to be very proud of, so.
If I could, I'd like to take the time to thank Sikich to get, getting me through this last year's, last year you saw a little bit of the statistical information in the audit, it wasn't the full CAFER last year. This year, we dug in and finished it up, and I'd like to thank staff as well for all their hard work throughout the whole year in getting this together and getting it ready to go, and hopefully next year, this certificate will be in the audit as well, and we'll keep it going from there.
And with that, then, I'll take the vote, I have a motion in a second already. Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. I am seeking a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? We are adjourned at 7:28. And now I need to call the...
We need to call to order and roll call.
Roll call for the committee of the whole meeting, trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee Peck isn't here, trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Okay, at this point, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on September the 22nd.
So move.
Unfortunately, the clerk's not here, but I'd like to compliment her on the content of two of the sections, the interchange one and the other section where termination, or the demolition permit, she captured a lot of the conversation very nicely, so whenever she's back, please compliment her.
And wait till you see how well she does on these, too.
I can imagine.
She has a lot of work after I try to run the meeting, and I tell you, she does a lot of great lifting for us. So I have a motion in a second, roll call then. Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Those past presidential comments?
I made my comments out of order, but that's all the comments I had.
And trustee comments?
I have a question. We had an attorney present last week regarding compliance with Open Meetings Act, as well as public comment policy. Are we exploring that or investigating that? Are we exploring that or investigating that?
Most of the procedure that we're going through are in compliance. He is reviewing to see if we have to or should change anything else. But he was spoke to right after the meeting, and that's where we're at right now.
Any other trustee comments?
I have one comment. We were talking, this falls back to our audit presentation that we took the vote ahead of, just a minor remark to make. I think about, Ms. Benucci alluded to the fact of the dark times that occurred two thousand and eight when we had to release individuals. All of a sudden, Mr. Murphy found out he had two or three million dollars he had to come up with.
Four point three. Let's just be clear.
Four point three, and there we go. It actually increased. All of a sudden, someone tells you you're four point three million dollars in debt, et cetera, et cetera. And I remember the difficult time for Mr. Murphy and Mr. Collins, our mayor, in having to inform people at a very dark time in our economy that had to be released. That had to be some of the most difficult times, the most trying times for elected officials and also department people. We did survive it, and we're very fortunate right now. We have a very healthy community, a very healthy financial community also, and it's really a joy to be able to serve in the capacity that the people on this board serve when we do have a couple of dollars jingling in our pocket instead of looking for, looking for a way to try and scrape together services. And it was an awful lot of good work, and the years have finally paid off. And this, this financial report was so healthy, it was unbelievable, and it's just really gratifying to see it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, now is the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, three to five minutes per topic. Any public comments? Seeing none. The workshop tonight, our first agenda item on the workshop is capital budget, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Persons.
Thank you. And it's great news on this evening to hear the report that the capital account is back in the black again, and there's actually good positive revenue coming into the capital side that gives the board a lot of flexibility to keep up with maintenance projects and also complete some public works, capital improvements that have been needed for some time now. The first couple of slides that I'd like to go through are some of the bigger capital projects that have been on the village's radar for a while. They've, there have been residents that have expressed needs related to these projects as far as improving safety, transportation, pedestrian access and things of that nature. And through the hard work of the engineering staff behind me, we talked about staff a little bit, and the mayor and the board as well, we were actually able to secure a couple of grants related to these projects. So we haven't lost sight of things, although we're in black, in the black, related to capital improvement projects. We're still out there very actively seeking grants for improvements out there. As the board is well aware, one hundred and twenty-seventh street between Route fifty-nine and all the way west to Gilmore, which is near the, adjacent to the Grand Park subdivision, the majority of it has curb and gutter, storm sewers, street lighting, all the things that you'd typically see within a street within the village of Plainfield. There's a small section of one hundred and twenty-seventh street generally between Higgs and Meadow, adjacent to the MAF subdivision or Shenandoah subdivision that currently is in that rural cross-section. The ditches on either side are relatively deep. There's needs for street lighting. There are not pedestrian accommodations in that area. So on the negative side, it does need some attention. On the positive side, it rated very high when it compared to other roadways within Will County for grant participation. And that the, the plan is to approach this project, this project has been on the village's five-year plan, is on the village's five-year plan, to successfully work through the grant program. Now, two million dollars has been set aside by Will County for the village of Plainfield specifically for this project. And the intent is to work diligently on the engineering, to get the engineering up to date and completed, and the permitting for the crossing. We have to cross the Norman Drain in that area, and there's some special permitting that's needed to do that, as well as some utility relocation that needs to occur. In the coming year's budget, we anticipate it'll be, the majority of it will be engineering. And hopefully, we'll have it out to bid in the spring of, of two thousand sixteen in that range, so we can get this project, or two thousand fifteen, so we can, sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen, so we can get this project rolling and get it under construction. This is a one-construction-season project. On the positive side, the water and sewer lines have been completed. The storm sewer's actually been completed, too, as well. So that is an added benefit, and it gives us that advantage to moving the project forward. So we're excited about this project. I know there were a couple of residents, the Rodriguez family and the Rowe family came before the board not too long ago with their concerns about this project, and we have had some other comments and concerns, and this is a very important project to the community, and it's, we're pleased to see that it's going to happen here. So that'll be included. And again, this is intended to be interactive. Any questions that the board may have about it or comments would be fine. And I have a few of the big projects that we're going to focus on. Then we'll talk a little bit about the pavement condition out there and the planning for maintenance. And again, we're here to start the budget process and open to any and all suggestions from the board as to needs that are out there, too.
One, one twenty-seventh is going to be done next year?
One hundred and twenty-seventh street, engineering this winter optimistically. If construction starts, it'll be late in the season. So most likely, the majority of it'll be budgeted in the following budget year. So this coming budget year, two thousand fifteen, it would actually hit, the majority of it would be two thousand sixteen. But we believe the grant will be available as early as two thousand fifteen.
Okay, that'd be great, because there are more residents than the two that were in front of us. There's quite a few out there who have been after that for years because of the safety in the wintertime. So if it could be done before, not this winter, but next winter, that'd be, you'd get a lot of applause for that, let's put it that way.
We, we will work on this project diligently, and as quickly as we can get it completed, we will get it completed.
Great, thank you.
And we'll keep the board apprised. The second big project, and this is-
Before you go on that, Alan, if you don't, if you don't mind, my sincerest apologies. Part of the reason why we wanted to actually have the capital budget conversation at the beginning of our entire budget presentation, usually we save it toward the end. And why we've saved it toward the end is because we had absolutely no money to spend. Now that we've actually paid off the negative position on that fund, you'll notice that both Randy Jessen and Scott Threewood are sitting behind Alan Persons. They would like to, if you're comfortable, begin the process of developing, bidding the bid documents and actually getting out on the street sooner than later, not necessarily for this particular project, but they are essentially, we're looking for your, your feedback so that we can actually get out early. The quicker we can get out with our bidding processes, you know, projects are beginning to pop again, prices are, there's some hint of some possible escalation in prices. We'd like to get out ahead of other folks so that we can get some more favorable consideration. That's why we're here tonight early, is to get your feedback and try to push along some projects. So I'm sorry to interrupt that part of your presentation, Alan. You probably have that at the end, but since the question was asked, I thought I would lead in that that's-
Since you asked for a priority, I would say one hundred and twenty-seventh is the number one priority, the fourth and in front of us tonight. They all should be moved forward aggressively, I agree. But if you could move just one, that's a safety issue. It's been a safety issue for several years, and I put emphasis on safety.
Well, do. No, and it really, to touch on a point, it was three years ago in this building that we had talked about the position of the capital fund, and then as well as we were focused more on maintenance. And we, and we had completed the pavement index out in the community, and the question was, how much will it cost to maintain the current pavement condition? And the answer was, you can't afford it. And so the next question was, you know, how much can we afford? And we talked about the amount. Well, what happens if we maintain it at this certain level? How quickly does it deteriorate? So the positive news tonight, and I'm not going to cut to the chase right now, is that we've got some flexibility and funds to do some projects that are needed. We're going to partner with some grant money, and the grant money's actually going to pay a majority of the project, which is nice, too, as well. And then we'll also get to the pavement maintenance program, which we actually have enough money planned in the future to do the resurfacing and to keep the pavement condition at its current level. So those, you know, all good. This is a lot easier meeting tonight than it was three years ago, I can tell you that. That's, that's for sure. The next project that we have is the Renwick Road project, and we did inadvertently pull some information over this inside your, your packet. So pay attention to the wording on the, on the slide, and it's a little shorter up there, too, as well. The grant amount is the same. We foresee construction actually probably being out two to three years away in that range. The grant will continue to be available to the village. This isn't one of those things where we'll lose the opportunity to get it if we don't tackle it next year or the year after. But I think it's going to take a little more time to get the engineering completed, and then we'd also like to build some partnerships with the other entities that are adjacent to the roadway. We do have a section of the roadway that's within the township, a section that's adjacent to the park district. We're working through the phase one project, but we want to make sure that each one of the voices are heard along in the process to make sure that we're providing the right amenities. Of course, the continuation of the multi-use path is important, but things, I'll just throw it out there, is decorative lighting, something that the park district and the township would be interested in. We have that at the Renwick Road Bridge, and should that continue all the way down to the park. So just to get the opportunity to vet all those things out before the actual construction occurs. But again, the Will County Governmental League, which comprises of representatives from all the communities that participate within Will County, believe that this project was significantly improve, important to the area as far as transportation, as far as safety, too, as well. So this project has a one point four, almost one point five million dollar grant that is, that is placed or set aside for this project. And as I had mentioned a couple of meetings ago, Plainfield fared very well in this process, and we were only second to Will County itself in the amount of dollars that were coming back to any one entity. So I'm, I'm pleased with that, and I think we've got two great projects here for the future. So there'll be a tremendous amount of public input on Renwick Road, and I would encourage the public to be involved in this and give us input as to what they'd like to see along Renwick Road. The next item, and the next several slides actually deal with pedestrian improvements throughout the community. This is an item that was very important as part of the strategic plan or community-wide plan, as the board is well aware, and the public was very involved in this, too, as well. One of the items that came up in the top ten, if not the top five, was to improve walkability and connections between different areas, too, as well. This is one hundred and thirty-fifth street. We're very familiar with this. The engineering design has been completed. The ICC is near the end of the process, we hope, and we will get this one out to bid as, as soon as possible and completed in the spring. We just have to work through that comment period as required by the ICC. As soon as we get the final order, then this project will move forward. The next slide, we actually have several locations here. Meadow Lane and Lockport Street, it's kind of interesting, and it, and it makes, it kind of brings it home when you look at it with the aerial here at Route one twenty-six or Lockport and Meadow, all the sidewalks and within the village's jurisdiction, and there isn't anything that crosses the state's jurisdiction in this area. We've actually worked very closely with the state on the traffic signal that's going to be installed. This will be in next construction season, it won't be this year. But there will be a connection to each one of these sidewalks, a pedestrian signals and countdown timers at each location, too, as well, to make it a safe crossing in this area and to make it safer for vehicles to travel across this roadway, because we do get quite a bit of traffic that is related to the school. And we do have school buses and parents and other people who travel this area. The kids, for the most part, on this area are bussed back and forth, but there's always after-school programs and before-school programs that can raise some concerns, and we do see some pedestrians in this area. So that will definitely help improve the pedestrian safety in there. The state is picking up a majority of the cost at this location, so we're pleased with that, too, as well. One hundred and twenty-seventh street at two forty-eighth, the multi-use path ends kind of abruptly, and there are some improvements on both legs at two forty-eighth and one hundred and twenty-seventh street that are needed. We're going to continue to work on this actively. We're working with the property owner to the south related to the multi-use path. As the board is well aware, we've worked with Edwards, and they are paying for the sidewalk improvement on the north side of the project, and that's, that'll actually occur this year and be completed this year. And we understand the sensitivity of having Plainfield north in the area as well as a medical campus and district there. And then, you know, you're not far from the commercial center with Walmart and the Target and other things like that. We see quite a few walkers and people using those pedestrian routes. And Van Dyke Road has become a very popular area for recreation. We see runners and bikers and things like that, and this is just a logical connection that we really like to focus on, and I know it's one of the things that the board and the public had focused on before, too, as well. So you'll see some activity in those areas, too, as well. Ford Beggs down on the other side, actually in central area town, not far from Central High School, needs some improvements in connections. This came up in discussion, discussions, and we're going to work on those connections in the coming year or two as well to make those more logical and more walkable. The Heritage Grove Middle School, I had just mentioned Van Dyke Road, there's a gap in the sidewalk that needs to be completed across the school. It's not across the school property, it's within our easement. So we do have the property, so that's not an issue. We are intending to include this as part of the program to improve the walkability in that area. I think the last slide that I have related to pedestrian bikeways and walkways involve Frasier Road is another area where the sidewalk ends abruptly and needs some connections. There's an on-street, off-street bike, multi-use path thing going on there, too, that we'd like to correct. Edwards, we had talked about a little bit, this just kind of focuses a little bit closer on that, on that area, but just to focus on the Van Dyke Road, one hundred and twenty-seventh street corridor. The slide that you see to the bottom and to the left is kind of a typical, this is one hundred and thirty-fifth street and Route fifty-nine. But as the board is well aware, there are not crosswalks that are marked at most of these locations on the north side of town. On the south side of town, when the reconstruction of Route fifty-nine occurred, every intersection that's within the village has crosswalks, and they have crosswalk signals, and it allows for pedestrian movements. On the north side, when this was completed in two thousand and one, it wasn't high on the priority list for IDOT, and it did not get included as part of that. So we would like to partner with IDOT at these locations, really focusing on one hundred and thirty-fifth street, just due to the fact of the pedestrian movements that we see between the Osco Jewel site and Menards and Myers and the gas station. We see that there is a connection there. And then there are other pedestrian movements where people follow that one hundred and thirty-fifth street to get from one side of town to the other, and it can be very challenging crossing Route fifty-nine at that location. So we want to partner with IDOT, and they already recognize that this is a need here, but we would like to get this on the, on the front burner, as, as we would say, and get this project moving forward, too, as well. And Harvest Glen, we do have a small connection issue there with some of the improvements in the area, the McDonald's and now the one hundred and thirty-fifth street crossing and just some of the other developments there, too. We're seeing more walkers and occasionally walkers along Route thirty. This would allow opportunity for someone to actually walk on the sidewalk and not have to compete with traffic out there. We will have other pedestrian improvements, and they are laid out on the exhibits. We have some of the exhibits here, so if the public would like to take a look at the exhibits or the exhibits that were included within the packet, and I'll kind of finish on the note with the exhibits, too, as well. But we'll circle back around to pedestrian crossings, and I'll take any comments and questions related to that. The last two big construction projects that we see in the near term are related, one hundred and forty-third street and Route thirty. That's currently what we deem a temporary traffic signal at that location. This is over near the Family Video, and we've got a couple of vacant properties, but we're, have a good relationship with the owners on all corners, which helps. This is on IDOT's radar as far as an- This is on IDOT's radar as far as an improvement is concerned, and then ultimately a permanent traffic signal has to be installed at this location, and we're targeting within the next three to five years. It could be sooner than that, but again, it's a partnership between IDOT, and that we would like to see the permanent improvements where we get longer turn lanes, pedestrian improvements, permanent traffic signals, some street lighting in this area that would help improve this intersection too as well.
How much do you think IDOT will contribute to that one?
Well, they, you know, they have two legs to the intersection, so it wouldn't be unrealistic to have IDOT contribute about 50% of the cost. That would be traditional if it fit within their program. And so we have had discussions with IDOT about this too as well, but again, we've worked through the Phase One, we're most of the way through the Phase Two, so the final engineering's almost been completed with the concurrence of IDOT. Everything's gone back and forth to IDOT's office for permitting, and then after that it would go into the funding cycle. So I don't have a dollar figure like a grant like from the Will County Governmental League, but we'd expect a funding agreement where they would participate as well.
It'd be significant, most likely. I mean, like the light on Essington and 126, they ended up paying much more than we expected. We paid it, and they paid most of, 90% of it back, something like that?
Yeah, typically, you know, Route 59 is a good example too as well. We paid a minimal amount for those intersection improvements too, and as we work towards the Route 30 agreement, which will be coming before the board here soon, the majority of the improvements are water and sewer, old, 80-year-old, 100-year-old water and sewer lines that need to be replaced. It would be our responsibility anyway, but things like Lily Cash Road, Renwick Road, you know, those, IDOT bears the majority of the cost for the improvement. So it, a strong partnership with IDOT is very important, so the community doesn't have to shoulder the burden. And again, it's Route 30, you know, IDOT should shoulder a good amount of the cost. So that's our goal on this project.
Thank you.
Also, just as a reminder about the signage for the truck route.
Yes.
To be included in this.
And we continue to work on that, and signage can be done, you know, even before this project moves forward too as well. The last big project that I have as far as within the near term here is 127th Street and Plainfield Naperville Road. This intersection actually warrants traffic signals at this location. It's currently a four-way stop. Bowling Brook is responsible for one of the legs of the intersection. Will County is actually responsible for the other two, and we're responsible for the third. We've taken the lead in the engineering, although we have received some grant money and continue to receive some grant money for this project through the Will County Governmental League. Again, this is a project that was approved through two rounds ago through, when they were reviewing and accepting projects, so they see this as an important project too as well, and we'd like to see this come to fruition here within the next two to five years. But again, this will be a little different partnership between the county and between Bowling Brook to have this one move forward. Those are the big projects that we were looking at as far as engineering and even potential construction, starting construction of 127th Street. I hear the board loud and clear and the community too as well that that's a priority, and we want to move that one as quickly as we possibly can and can get that to, to construction. As I had mentioned, three years ago, we went out and we did a pavement survey, a sophisticated pavement survey, and we landed in about the 80, as a number, 80 range, which is actually relatively good overall for, for an average, and we were in that, depending on where you were at, you were in the, you know, upper mid 70s to mid 80s, and there were some subdivisions that didn't have the final lift of asphalt, so they brought the number down a little bit, and others that were just recently surfaced, and they brought the number up, and it did help. But as Michael had mentioned earlier, we really only have a couple of subdivisions that are left with the final asphalt, and the good part is, is that we're through that, we're near through that process, which is good for us, and we can breathe a sigh of relief. But the other part of it is that, as outlined in the audit, we have infrastructure that depreciates and we're responsible for and needs to be improved at, on a regular basis, and road resurfacing is just one of those things too as well. So as you look at the exhibits, and I'll start with the first exhibit that talks about pavement condition, and we start out with the orange line, which is very poor, and again, for the public, or if there's anyone that's watching that would like copies of these, feel free to send me an email, or stop by Public Works would be fine, we'd be happy to make copies. We can also post these on the website as well, scan them in and post them on the website, so anyone can go to our website later next week, later this week, and then download any of the exhibits and take a look at it. But the very poor condition, you can look at that line, there were only a few roads that really landed in that poor to fair condition. In fact, most of the roadways that you see are actually in that fair condition. Some, we talk internally, they're a fair condition question mark, because depending on if we get another winter like we had last year, they could go from fair to very poor in a very short period of time. We saw a little bit of that in 135th Street and Van Dyck Road that we recently resurfaced. That was in fair condition, and it went from fair to poor or very poor, depending on your take on it, in a short period of time. So we really have to keep an eye on the, on the pulse out there too. But this is current condition today as far as how the streets would be rated, and our current pavement rating is right in the high 70s, low 80, right in that range, and the goal of the board was to keep the pavement condition at its current level, potentially increase it if possible, but not to burden the taxpayers with any additional new taxes or new fees that would, would cover this cost, and we've, we've hit that balance here too as well. So as we look out into the future, most of the roadways are in pretty good condition, which is good. Ironically, many of the subdivisions were built around the same time, so we've got to keep a close eye on things. As pavement starts to deteriorate, we want to keep up with the program so we're not left behind. The, what was committed last year, a million dollars in the MFT program, a million dollars out of the capital fund, was sufficient over the next five years to maintain that pavement condition at about 80, and even take into consideration these subdivisions were built near the same time, and to keep up with that too as well. So this is the current condition where we're at, that's exhibit number one.
Before you leave, I have a request.
Sure.
Unfortunately, on the copy I have, I can't tell whether good is the dark blue or the light blue, and if we're possible to, those are two dominant colors on the chart, so if they could have been shifted around so that it's more obvious where the very good ones are. I assume very good's the light one?
Yeah, very, very good is the light one, and I apologize when we, when this went through the color copier, it was a little different than what we saw on the screen, and when it's converted to the PDF for people to download, that it'll, it'll stand out a lot more clearly. So.
Okay, I just.
Go ahead.
Just if, if it could be a little more obvious. You know what I'm talking about, so that's fine. Concept is great, I mean, you've laid it out beautifully, it's just to visualize, or if somebody asks a question, what it is, you have to study it pretty hard to figure out whether good or very good or that type of thing. The greens easy to see, the other lighter colors, red, pink, whatever, you know, they're obvious, but the blues are 80% of what's here, and they're similar, so, anyway.
And, and you know, and I know we're all, a little psychology here, blue and greens are usually, you know, the feel-good colors. When you see the red, it jumps right out at you, and that, that's what it means, it's fair to poor, and, and so you'll see those roadways that jump out. Before we get to the pedestrian crossings, if I move to the five-year plan, which was included within the budget here too as well, you'll see that it closely coincides with the condition of the pavement, and that the only thing, of course, there's going to be some tweaking over time with this, so it gives us a little insight as to what we are most likely looking at based on the pavement condition for next year and the following year potentially. But keep in mind that it's a little different program. In the past, traditionally, we've resurfaced the entire subdivision or broken the subdivision into different units and resurfaced the subdivision in that manner, and there may be a few cases, and I'm not going to pick on Mary Brook, but on Mary Brook Drive is in poor condition at this point. It, it makes most logical sense to tackle that in the coming year, and then to look at the other roadways in the years after that too as well. So you have that, and I'm just using Mary Brook as an example. You can see in some of these other subdivisions, we tried to keep it consistent and tried to focus on the entire subdivision, but there are some roadways within subdivisions that take more traffic, or they were constructed at a different time in the history of the subdivision, and they're just showing more signs of stress and wear. So we'll, we'll do our best to focus on subdivisions as a whole, but there will be some instances where we're going to pick out one or two roadways, do that within that construction season or resurface them, and then follow up with other roads or the, the rest of the roads in the following year. Now, if it makes sense to do the entire subdivision, just bidding-wise, because you do get a little better price if you're going to tackle the entire subdivision, that's what we'll recommend to the board too as well. But if you look at the 2014-2018 plan, it is flexible, and we will have to reevaluate the pavement after this coming winter too as well, and we'll have to keep our pulse, our eye on the pulse of the budget too as well. But you can kind of look at where we believe that we're headed by 2018 and the areas that we're going to focus on by 2018. Again, we'll revisit this every year, and that since this is the first discussion in the budget process, by the time we get near the end of the budget process, I anticipate that we'll revisit this again, so there'll be a lot of time, and we're always open to public comments and questions too as well. But this kind of gives us an idea as to where we're headed in the next five years.
Just a question, I'll obviously get it if anybody sees it, Pilcher Road there is in green, is to be done by others. Who are the others involved here?
Well, Pilcher Road is, and I apologize, the, there are two greens on the bottom here, and I told you the green was a feel-good color too as well. You know, it feels good when somebody else does it too as well, or helps out in the instance earlier here too as well. It actually lands in the potential 2015.
Ah, that's much better, I appreciate that.
That's, that's a green, so, you know, it's a potential for 2015, but really we have to reevaluate it. It may be pushed back to 2016. There may be some other ways of working to the.
It's not in great shape, obviously, but I, if it was somebody else who's going to do it, I sure want to know who's going to do it, it's a village street, so. Okay, that's fine, thank you for clarifying that.
We'll, we'll either, you know, make this a darker color or put some hash marks in it or something like that too as well. We did have, for instance, the, the green that you're looking at for the most part is in Hidden River on the southern-central area of the community, so if you go to the center part in the southernmost area, near Fritz Road and the river, Hidden River is the only one that is really by others at this point. Aside from Playa Vista will be out there in the future too as well and be included. The, the last exhibit that we have for the board's discussion tonight is just a pedestrian improvement plan. This was based off all of the comments that we had received as part of the public process and the areas that the public really wanted the village to focus on, so I really do appreciate the public input that we had gotten. But as we remember from the exercise that we had, that was delayed by a potential tornado, but it did happen. It did happen, and that the information that the citizens came out and brought forward were very similar to the issues and items that the mayor and the board had brought up to as well. So it was just a, a good meeting to get together and understand that at the, towards the end of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, that we were all on the same page. We were pretty much on the same page before we started the meeting, and it did bring to light some other issues, but this exhibit highlights the areas that we would like to focus on over the next five years. And again, these two exhibits, as far as road resurfacing and pedestrian connections, fit within the five-year plan, fits within Tracy's projections as far, Tracy's and Brian's projections as far as revenues are concerned, and should not require any additional increases or requests from the publics for additional funds to fund these things, that they're, they're programmed in that way. So it's an exciting time that we actually have some revenue coming in to meet the needs of our residents. So with that, I'll be open to any questions or comments, and again, this, since this is early in the budget process, we have a long comment period, so we have a lot of time to accept comments from the mayor, board, and the public.
Nicely done, very, very complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, that was a very well-done presentation. As I said at the, at the beginning of when Alan was speaking, that if you're comfortable with the approach that we're using, it does give staff the chance to begin developing the bid documents. As you said, as Alan said, there will be a need for some flexibility based on what happens this winter. However, the preliminary work can be done, we can have the documents generally ready to go. We'd like to get them out before, actually, the fiscal year comes around. In fact, we might even ask for your approval on some of those bid results before the fiscal year starts, which is something of a departure for us, but at the same time, I think you'd be happy with the numbers that we would get out of the bid results, if you're comfortable with us going that particular approach. Tracy and I are comfortable that we can do the, we can manage the funds between the fiscal years. We're actually at a financial position where we finally can actually do some of that, so if you're comfortable with us moving forward, we'd like to direct staff to begin their work.
Yeah, I'm certainly comfortable too. I think Alan stated very well, as long as we don't need to talk about finding other sources of revenue to pay for these, then I think it makes some sense. We ought to do what we can do with what we have to increase, not exactly palatable, but if we're not increasing, we've got things to work with, we've managed to save the money and redeploying it in ways which we think are very important, so I would encourage you to get started, because these are obviously very good projects that well worth pursuing early rather than later, so, my point of view anyway.
And as you mentioned, some of them are a little overdue, so that's why we'd like to get.
That is true.
Further ahead as we can.
People keep telling me that.
Well, thank you for the input tonight, Alan.
Thank you.
Great presentation, I really do appreciate it. Our next item tonight then is the, unless there are any other comments, then we'll move on to our next item, which is the Settlers Park Monument Policy, and Mr. Garrigan has that.
Yes, thank you. As you know, we've had discussions, previous discussions with a number of veteran groups about a permanent relocation, of having a permanent home in Settlers Park for potentially several war monuments. In pursuit to that discussion, staff did advise the board that we come back with a policy, proposed policy, for future acceptance of those monuments, to have a comprehensive policy. In accordance with that direction, staff is proposing a actual monument policy pursuant to my staff report. Staff has attempted to basically draft a policy with very specific parameters, a fairly narrowly drafted policy, which basically would allow only appropriate monuments in Settlers Park. Obviously, we don't want Settlers Park to become a dumping ground for monuments, we only want those monuments which would be consistent with the village policy as it relates to honoring the war veterans, or what I've identified is as a major historical, perhaps tragic event in Plainfield. So staff has attempted to basically draft a set of policies with very specific criteria with a fairly narrow window, which would allow certain types of monuments, i.e. war or veteran monuments, to be actually relocated to the village's Settlers Park. Another aspect that we were trying to be sensitive to is potentially with regards to the potential cost or maintenance. As you know, Settlers Park is actually a glorious park, but there, I could defer to Mr. Persson's, it's a fairly high maintenance challenge for the village of Plainfield. So staff, again, attempted not to basically create any undue hardships on the Public Works Department as it relates to maintenance, so we're trying to basically work with any future veteran group that would relocate a monument to Settlers Park and put some of the burden on them of creating some type of perpetual fund, which would help subsidize the long-term maintenance of any future monument. And another aspect is a legal aspect. Staff is basically proposing that any future monument that is issued, or I'm sorry, relocate the Plainfield, Settlers Park, that. the Plainfield, Settlers Park, that a license be granted, instead of the village taking that basically as personal property, i.e. we own the, we own the monument, and therefore it becomes our responsibility for ma, long-term maintenance of it, that we work with the veterans' groups, or appropriate groups, to provide a license, which allows them to relocate the monument to Settlers Park, but also requires them to basically partner with the village on the long-term maintenance of that. That would require perhaps some type of perpetual funding mechanism, which we would have to work on a case-by-case. So, again, staff is really looking for the direction from the village board as it relates to this overall policy. We've been working, I've been working with Commander Greco on this, as you know. Commander Greco is working with a number of veterans groups on the actual relocation of these monuments, but we thought it'd be actually appropriate to actually have a policy, which be a consistent policy for all future veteran groups who may have an interest in locating a future war monument in Settlers Park. So, with that, I'm just looking for village board input this evening, if there's support for this, somewhere down the road, we'll bring this back to, for formal approval by the village board.
A couple of comments, Michael. One question, Settlers Park isn't necessarily a memorial, we have the pathway, we've got things of Plainfield's history, so I think we need to decide whether we want a monument policy, which would include things other than loss-of-life type things, or army, or military things, or we, the policy could be specific for memorials, which is more or less what it is, but Settlers Park, I think, has a broader purpose. I mean, it's titled Settlers Park, not Veterans Park, or that sort of thing, so I would see if we could figure out which one of those we want to do. If it really is a monuments policy, I, a few places you would tweak a little bit to make it a monuments policy, history of Plainfield, important events, maybe important events in the United States, I mean, we could maybe do that, they don't have to be monuments, they could be trees, or, as you say, do things, so I would, I would consider that option. The other things that you've incorporated here, I think, are excellent, the idea of maintenance being covered, that sort of thing, the controls, as to who designs, I think you have the right to reject it out of hand, as I read it now, that you don't like what you're, you don't have to submit it to us. I think the village ought to have the right to reject it, too, without necessarily going back to the criteria, so that's, that's a little phrase chain in our particular section, but to cover, cover the costs, I think that's excellent, the idea of licensing, as you described, makes very good sense, so I think the elements are, are there, we just need to decide what, which we're trying to do. If it's strictly memorial for veterans, and that's where the issue came up, I know, and then we might make it more specific. I personally, since Settlers Park is a more general park than veterans, I would like to see it a more general policy, and just tweak it from that point, if you'd look at it a little more broadly and see what changes you might want to make.
Michael, I think you did a great job with this policy. I like it for its specificity and its brevity, and I think it speaks, goes right to the point, and it's very clear and concise.
You know, I'm in agreement with both trustees and their comments, you know, nothing is more disturbing than the fact that we don't have a guideline, and another thing that's disturbing is so many positions that people present to this board and to our administrations are emotionally driven, they're, and you can't say no, or we feel oftentimes, well, you can't say no, if someone comes and says, well, we need a particular thing, we need a monument move, we need something, the honor of the tornado of 1990, et cetera, et cetera. The, the guideline is really good, and I totally approve it, and like I say, it becomes tiresome to hear all of the emotionally driven things that people have presented to various trustees, and to the mayor, and probably to you, also, and it's unnecessary, but if we got a guideline, you just simply say to someone, this is it, and thank you for doing this.
Michael, how does this work in relation to the last group that's come forward with the monument they want to move from Plainfield High School?
That's, I think, absolutely, I think that would be very consistent with the criteria as outlined, I think there's nothing in that proposal which would be inconsistent with this criteria. To be frank, we are working with them as we speak right now, and some of the funding mechanisms, regards to the maintenance, those sorts of things, we're actually discussing with them right now. The other aspect that we, we're, we're not discussing yet this evening is an overall comprehensive plan, so whatever monuments are located in the park, again, are done, done in a unified manner as it relates to hardscape and landscaping, so it's, you know, it's consistent with the, the quality of Settlers Park, which we all admire, so that's something we're working on as, as we speak, but there's nothing in that proposal which would be inconsistent with this document.
All right, thank you.
The last part you just covered, that was what I was going to ask, because I think if we have, we have three units that are proposed to be on that, on that spot, the design of how they're placed, with the, the idea of other units being brought to the village for whatever, you know, in the future-
Right.
So, we have to design it so that each unit can stand alone, or stand with the others, and look halfway decent-
Exactly.
-rather than stuffing one here and stuffing another there, you know, so, but I, I totally agree with that, so.
Are there any other comments?
So, based on direction, we'll bring back a formal policy for adoption sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reminders?
October 20th is the next village board meeting, the 21st will be the planning commission meeting, and the 27th will be our next committee of the whole.
Motion. Second.
Motion and second have been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same side? Thank you.